Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Roseville City Council Meeting of September 21st, 2022. I'd like to welcome you all and ask our clerk to please call for the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haldishelt?
Here.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci's excused for tonight, and Mayor Bernasconi.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Champa if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk if she would please announce the meeting procedures.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 21st, 21st, sorry, City of Roseville City Council meeting. If you are present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they're available at the end of the staff table to your right. As a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit the City Council from taking action or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council at the podium. They will be provided with three minutes during this public comment on non-agenda matters so that they can express their concerns and comments. The maximum allotted time for such comments is 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to comment on agendized items will have five minutes to express their concerns on items that are listed on tonight's agenda. Time will be monitored, and once the red light blinks at the podium, we request that the speakers please conclude their comments. Lastly, if you address the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you very much for your civic participation tonight, and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much. We will move into public comment. Is there anyone tonight that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Now's the time to do so. You can come forward to the podium. Is there anyone here tonight? Okay, I will close public comment. We have one at the end of the meeting as well. We will move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you. All matters on the consent are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, staff, or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, we do have item 6.14 that will need to be pulled. That is a request of staff, and we understand that we also have item 6.17 that is being requested by a member of the public at this time to be pulled as well for further discussion. Any other, I'm sorry, 6.7?
6.7.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to pull any item for further discussion? We have 6.7 at this time. Any others? Okay, with that, we have item 6.7 and 6.14 that will need to be removed from the consent. If I could get a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.6, and items 6.8 through 6.13, and 6.15, please.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mendoza, with a second by Councilmember Albert. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldishelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci's excused for tonight, and Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you.
So we'll move on to item 6.17, and so-
6.7?
I'm sorry, 6.7. I do apologize. It is item 6.7, and that item pertains to a response to the 2021-22 Grand Jury Final Report on Homelessness in Placer County. This was requested by a member of the public.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi, council members. Richard Wuchmer, I'm Richard Wuchmer, concerned citizen of Roseville. Today, I'm concerned about the agenda item before you today, 6.7, the grand jury report from Placer County regarding homelessness and our city's response to it. So I do, ultimately, I take issue with the belligerence of the reply and the potential chilling effect that has on a shared problem of not just Roseville, but with other neighboring communities, as Placer County as a whole. The, it's important to understand that this is a shared problem, that even if we can solve just Roseville's homeless problem, that it doesn't just solve everyone's, everyone's problem. Our homeless problem will be come back tomorrow, even if we can solve it today, as transient populations from surrounding areas come into our community. So I do think it's important that we share our knowledge and share our expertise, the things that we have learned, with our neighbors in Placer County, and I don't see this, I see this as a missed opportunity to do that. So I am recommending to the council that you vote no to not approve the initial draft opinion, and that we come back on the 5th of October and still approve it. Now, that does essentially take us beyond the timeline that the county has given us to respond by October 1st. However, October 1st being a Saturday followed by a Sunday, I think that on Wednesday of that week, we can still provide the necessary reply with a better opinion drafted to both share our knowledge and prove the overall efficiency for everyone here to be able to address this problem that affects us all. I'll talk about specifically what I found in our reply. Again, it is a, has a confrontational attitude in general. It only agrees, addresses the six findings. Out of those six findings, it only agrees with one. That is the factual finding. Everything else, it tries to nitpick and find a reason to disagree, either partially disagree or fully disagree on each one of these six, each one of these five out of the six findings. Now, I understand the precision in using of words and having the proper definitions when dealing with large organizations. However, what I don't understand is bureaucratic nitpicking and pettiness. So, an example of this is, again, with finding F1, we talk about the, our response talks about the uncoordinated overlapping services that are addressed in the grand jury finding, but we go about kind of a circular logic and end up in the very next paragraph acknowledging the overlapping services. So we do mention in that paragraph some of the coordination we've made, but I don't think that that is a necessary to have a full disagreement with that particular finding. We also try to, in F5, try to walk a thin line in this, talk about the Supreme Court Boise ruling, that we're trying to walk a thin constitutional line with this, our actual response, saying that, yes, we can do the things that, because the Supreme Court doesn't say that we cannot explicitly do these things, we're going to try to walk the thin line, dance between the raindrops of this, of our particular response. So I think that overall, disagreeing with five out of the six findings when we have so many agreements that we can make and go forward, I think it's a, it has a potential chilling effect on everything. What we don't address in our memo is findings F2, F3, and F4. All of those from the grand jury testimony address a lack of transparency and accountability, and I don't think we're helping the problem. I think we're actually adding to the problem by trying to keep our information and not share some of the strategies and techniques that have worked and things that haven't worked for us. In our response, or in, sorry, in the grand jury's response, they talk about the Hampton Inn here in Roseville. So we do not address that in our response at all. We talk about other kinds of the permanent supportive housing, but not that $27 million project. We don't address that directly. I think that's a missed opportunity. I personally see that as a failure for the amount of money that we spend and what we get out of it, but that is in the grand jury testimony as a success. And so we need to, we owe it to our other neighboring communities and surrounding areas to let them know that this was not a success, let them know the weaknesses of that policy. So ultimately, our response to the recommendation is, again, another kind of belligerent disagreement. One of the things we mentioned is that no grant funding source can guarantee funding for indefinite future years. That's the main reason we use for not pursuing grants, because they don't solve the problem indefinitely. Well, unfortunately, if we just wait for a solution that will solve the problem for eternity, we'll be waiting for eternity. So I ask, again, that the Roseville City Government take a look at this, pull this item off the agenda, vote no, and then come back on Monday, once we've restaffed it, address a much better holistic solution to readdress it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
So, in anticipation, we did prepare a PowerPoint presentation articulating why we're here this evening and what the action item is specifically before the council. I'm happy to go through that unless the council would prefer that I specifically address the comments that were provided, whatever the council's direction would be.
Well, it's public comment, and so, you know, we're typically not here to have a back and forth. Does the council have any desire to hear from Mr. Speaker or his presentation?
I do. I would, I'd like to hear a response. I think the public should probably hear it, too, since an issue's been raised.
Okay. Do you want to see the slides, or do you want for him just to verbally respond?
Well, if he's prepared slides, that'd probably be, again, beneficial for people listening right now.
Okay, all right.
Never queued up. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi, and members of the City Council. My name is Joe Speaker. I'm the Assistant City Attorney for the City of Roseville. Next slide, please. Thanks. I wanted to begin this evening by making clear that the item before council tonight is only the approval of a proposed statutorily required response to the Placer County Grand Jury's final report. This is an annual occurrence and happens about the same time every year. There is no request or option for council to approve of any policies, practices, funding, projects, et cetera. This is just a request for approval of the proposed written response that is required by state law to the Grand Jury's annual final report. So what is the grand jury? The grand jury is an important investigatory body with the authority to investigate and evaluate local governments, to investigate citizen complaints, and to assist in criminal matters at the request of the district attorney. Like a jury in a courtroom, it's made up of citizens representing a cross-section from the community that serve a one-year term. The grand jury in California is unique because its duties include investigation of local and county governments as provided by statutes that go all the way back to 1880. This evening, we're here in regard to item one on the screen, which is the grand jury's role in investigating matters of local concern. The primary duty of the grand jury is to evaluate local government entities through a systematic fact-finding process. The objective of the investigations is to produce beneficial reports that assist local governments in running agencies more effectively and efficiently. This year, the grand jury produced a number of final reports related to different topics, but the City of Roseville was asked to comment on the final report related to homelessness in Placer County. This comment process happens annually and is very procedurally driven under California state law. State law dictates, after the grand jury submits a final report on the operations of any public agency subject to its reviewing authority, that the governing body of that public agency shall comment on the findings and recommendations pertaining to matters under the control of that governing body. So we are only required to provide comments. We are not required to implement any of the recommendations. As to the findings in a final report, state law dictates that a public agency has only two options when commenting on those findings. Option one is that we state that we agree with the finding, or option two is that we disagree wholly or partially with the finding, in which case, the response shall specify the portion of the finding that is disputed and shall include an explanation of the reason. Those are our only options statutorily for responding to a finding. If a recommendation is provided to a public agency or an employee of that agency, the law states that a public agency has only four options when commenting on that recommendation. Those are that the recommendation has been implemented with a summary regarding the implementation action, or that the recommendation has not yet been implemented but will be implemented in the future with a timeframe for that implementation, or that the recommendation requires further analysis with an explanation and scope and parameters of that analysis, and a timeframe for the matter to be prepared for discussion, and that timeframe shall not exceed six months from the date of publication of the grand jury report. Or, the last one, that the recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted or is not reasonable, and that there has to be an explanation provided. So, on June 30th, 2022, the Placer County Grand Jury issued its 2021-2022 final report, Homelessness in Placer County. The report included 17 findings and nine recommendations, which were mostly directed to Placer County. Of the nine recommendations, the City of Roseville City Manager was directed to provide a response along with the mayor to recommendation number five only. We are also required to provide these comments by October 1st, and they require approval by the council, which is the action item before you this evening. The proposed response that was attached to the staff report for this item and provided with tonight's agenda provides our required comments on the 17 findings for those matters within our purview, and our response to the one recommendation that was directed to us. As to that one recommendation, that recommendation states, "By January 1st, 2023, all cities and jurisdictions in Placer County shall identify and apply for grants, allocate funds, and establish their own municipal low-barrier facilities." Our proposed response can be summarized as follows, that the recommendation will not be implemented because it's not reasonable. Legally and fiscally, it's not possible to apply for, receive, and allocate mid-budget year the funding necessary to operate a municipal low-barrier facility of any size, especially by January 1st, 2023, which is just over three months from now. This is especially true given that no location has been identified for any such facility. We also noted in the response that even if all the funding for that establishment of a low-barrier facility was secured before the end of this calendar year, which, again, is mid-fiscal year, there is no allocation of funding for any kind of ongoing operation of such a facility, and no grant can provide a guaranteed funding source for indefinite future years. So this was the basis for our proposed response, that it's not reasonable. The proposed response that was provided in the staff report for this item also provides a very long list of just some of the things that the City of Roseville does to address homelessness. I've highlighted some of those on this slide. The City of Roseville actively identifies grants, applies for grants, and allocates those funds to issues related to homelessness. Specifically, the City of Roseville has actively sought and applied rapid rehousing and homeless prevention grant funds, community development block grant funds, permanent local housing allocation funds, and many other state and federal grant funds towards homelessness. Additionally, the City of Roseville supports permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is a proven housing method that reduces homelessness and allows for permanent housing, not just temporary shelter. The Roseville Housing Authority oversees the Housing Choice Voucher Program to ensure safe and affordable housing for residents. Monthly rental assistance payments invest over $7 million into our local rental economy annually. Our Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department continue to balance the needs of those experiencing homelessness in our community with daily maintenance duties in an effort to provide safe spaces for all of Roseville's residents and protect Roseville's natural resources. The Roseville Police Department maintains a social service unit. That social service unit consists of full-time police officers, practitioners, embedded county liaisons, and a full-time sergeant. This collaborative social worker police team contact the highest-risk community members each month to increase the potential for their participation in housing programs and services that will help them overcome homelessness or other challenges they may have. The social service unit uses a blended model of enforcement and services in order to create impactful results throughout the community. The City of Roseville also maintains a unique internal citywide homelessness task force consisting of representatives from our police department, housing division, economic development department, city attorney's office, government affairs team, and our Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department, and this team meets regularly to address issues on a citywide level. So kind of with that explanation, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign and deliver the provided response to the Placer County Grand Jury's 2021-2022 final report, Homelessness in Placer County, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Appreciate that, Joe. Thank you. Does staff have questions, or does our council have questions of staff? Go ahead, Scott.
October 1st is the deadline, according to grand jury. What if we're later than that?
So, the state statute actually prescribes a shorter timeline, and the grand jury actually in its report gave us and all the other jurisdictions, except for Placer County, a longer time to extend. So that's already an extended time period, and the grand jury's authority, they are actually a wing of the Superior Court, so the grand jury has all of the authority that a Superior Court has. So technically, if we're late, we would be in contempt of the grand jury's directive to us. What that actually translates to, you know, I don't know, but it would be contempt of court technically if we are late to those responses.
So one thing that, it was clear looking through the grand jury's report, they didn't understand the legalities of homelessness and how the city and the county relate to each other in several areas. I think they had some valid points, but one thing that really concerns me as a council member is we received this on June 30th, and we scheduled the item tonight without any time to possibly change it. We had a member of the public come up and ask, and if we chose to do that, we would be in violation, and so I'm not sure why we waited till the last possible meeting and not be able to have another meeting to change something if we needed to.
And I can shed a little light on that. So, the way the grand jury issued this particular report, they staggered the response timeline between the county and then the cities within the county. So Placer County actually had to respond earlier than we did. And so, we, originally, when the responses had been issued, we wanted to ensure, obviously, that we had the benefit of the county's response, and we're, and we're making sure that we were acting consistently, which is one of the things the grand jury has asked for us to do amongst the county. Because of the way that the grand jury staggered the responses by Placer County, who also, just like you, is required to go to their board of supervisors and approve it, we were then given, it's actually a very quick turnaround time on our port, in order to get this to you this evening before the deadline. So part of that is because of that delay in just the staggering of the county's response and us waiting until after the county's response to provide our response, which is how the grand jury had staggered the requested responses. But, but you make the point, you know, it's a valid point, that obviously, you want to have discretion to, to make changes. And I think, and I wouldn't be speaking out of turn, I don't believe, but technically, the response before you, if there's something that, in the letter, that you would want modification to, you can verbally make that recommendation, and we can make the modification to the letter and then have it signed and submitted tomorrow.
Modification?
Yeah. I mean, that's assuming, obviously, there are kind of spot changes, if you will.
And I would also be interested in, in a response to the public comment that was made?
Yeah.
If you have any responses to that comment.
Yeah, me, too. I'll kind of start with, maybe just something that I think might be a little bit of a confusion. So I'm going to start, I know the order it was provided, but I'm just going to start really quick with the comment that was made about the $23 million grant for the Hampton Inn, and I think there might be confusion, because the City of Roseville, as you know, did not receive that money. We do not operate that facility. That's not our facility. That facility is, that, that money came from the county. We're not involved in that. While it is located in our jurisdiction, it is not our property, and we have no, none of that money is ours. And I think there was confusion, because that facility for, during COVID, was operated as what's called Project Room Key, which was really more of a shelter model, and the money that was recently given for the renovation of that project to make it now what would be Project Home Key is what is converting it to permanent supportive housing. So that's not a facility we operate, and it hasn't been operated as permanent supportive housing as of yet. The plan is to do so, but we haven't seen the results of that yet, because it hasn't happened yet, the conversion of it. But regarding some of the earlier comments, you know, again, the statute that outlines the grand jury responses dictates, like I provided in the report, very, very, you know, clearly what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. So when we agree with the response, we're allowed to respond that we agree, and if we disagree, we have to respond that we disagree, and then explain whatever that portion is. And so, all of that, though, is couched under the overarching understanding that we're only allowed to comment on those matters pertaining, or to those things that are pertaining to matters under our control. And so, you know, I know that for those who haven't had the benefit of reviewing the entire grand jury report and the, all of the findings, to give an example, some of those findings that were provided in the grand jury report were things like Placer County refused to cooperate with us. We wouldn't know one way or the other whether that's true, and so that's why those responses are omitted, because we're not obligated. We did identify that in the report, that we have, we, as to findings, it's F2, 3, 4, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, and 17. It's a matter like that, where we're wholly unable to respond. So I understood the comment and respect the comment, that they wish we had provided something, but we're not able to, because they're not matters, and we frankly wouldn't know whether the answer was correct or not correct, because for those, again, who don't know, the grand jury process is entirely secretive. We don't have any benefit of knowing who they called as witnesses, when they met with them, et cetera. So we would have no way to comment on those findings. There was a specific statement regarding our response to F1 and to F5. F1, the, the finding is that there's no single entity, department, or individual providing oversight and leadership in Placer County for homeless issues resulting in uncoordinated or overlapping services, and we agreed that there is no single source providing those services in Placer County. But we disagreed with the statement that it's resulting in uncoordinated and overlapping services, and as we stated in the report, Roseville coordinates with our local nonprofits, government stakeholders, including Placer County, various businesses, community groups. We believe very strongly that there's a lot of collaboration, and to the extent there is anything overlapping, it's deliberate, because we always have to kind of describe, when we're dealing with those experiencing homelessness, they kind of fall into various buckets, right? There's different categories, and you have to have all those buckets, because- And you have to have all those buckets because what way fit one person may not fit the next person, and what fits that person may fit only partially another person. So there is by design overlapping services because that's a way of ensuring that individuals access it. So that's the nature of why our response was given that way. The other statement about F5 regarding the Martin v Boise, the actual finding states, "Martin v Boise mandates that campers cannot be removed from their place of encampment if there are no adequate shelters available to house them, thus facilitating continued growth of hazardous encampments on our county property." And we actually waffle on whether we could comment on what the county, what growth there is on the county property, but we still felt that we were going to provide in a good-faith effort a response to that. And we partially disagreed with that finding because that's an incorrect statement of what the Martin v Boise case states from a legal standpoint. Martin v Boise made clear that you can remove individuals from certain property given certain conditions. And so we felt that the finding was an oversimplification and misstatement of the law. So those were the two specific findings that were brought up. And I recognize the comment, and it's a fair point that, you know, we, in a perfect world, if we weren't constrained by what the statute says we have to say, we could be more elaborative on some of these responses. But the statute is specific about it, and we kept our responses to what's required without overstepping on those matters that truly aren't within matters pertaining to our jurisdiction. The last thing I think that was mentioned just at the end, and I hope I clarified it in the presentation, but we never said in the response that we were not moving, that we disagreed with the recommendation because we don't want to apply for grants because they can't guarantee the funding. We apply for grants, we routinely apply for grants. We apply for hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of grants which allocate towards homelessness. It's just the fact that the recommendation is lacking not just the creation, establishment of the shelter, but then the ongoing operation. And that's something that I think there's the misunderstanding of the underlying costs that go to running a facility. And so the recommendation was find money to open it, and that's one half of it, but it's not feasible given that there has to also be those ongoing costs, which is a funding source that we have no mechanism to recoup. So that was the basis for that comment. But I think if my notes serve me, that addressed the comments that were raised. But if there's anything that you think I'm missing or that you'd like me to elaborate on, I'm happy to.
I just thought it was important that we didn't just ignore the comments and move on. I wanted to make sure people heard the response from a legal perspective, so thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
None that haven't been answered by staff already, thank you.
Joe.
Thank you very much, Joe. I'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for, if there's no further deliberation, can we have a motion?
Thank you. The city council will consider adopting resolution number 20-365, authorizing the mayor and the city manager to execute the response to the 2021-22 Grand Jury Final Report on behalf of the city of Roseville. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldishel, with the second by Councilmember Mendoza. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci's excused for tonight, and Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 7.1, which is an open hearing.
We're going to move to 6.14.
Oh, thank you. I thought we were just moving that.
Yeah, so we need a motion to move that to the next meeting. So item 6.14 was pulled by staff, and the request is to move this item to the October 5th city council meeting. And this item is the Prospera Advitament Affordable Rental Housing Housing Trust Fund Loan Agreement Promissory Note Deed of Trust Regulatory Agreement and Budget Adjustment. If I can get a motion to move this item and continue it actually to the October 5th meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Albert? Thank you, thank you. So we've got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mendoza, with the second by Councilmember Albert. We'll do a roll call. Vice Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci is excused, and Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you, motion will be, I mean, item will be moved to the October 5th meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll hear item 7.1, which is a public hearing, the Community Development Block Grant 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's an open hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to staff to present. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tricia Isom, your housing manager, and I'm here tonight with Christine Phels, our CDBG analyst, and she's going to be giving you a quick presentation on our CDBG program.
Right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and council members. I am Christine Phels, housing analyst in the Economic Development Department. Tonight, we're holding a, oh, this is the wrong presentation. So, tonight, we're holding a public hearing to present the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER, which is the annual report that highlights the accomplishments for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program. The 2021 CDBG funds totaled $747,577. Since the city became an entitlement jurisdiction in 1986, CDBG and CV funds have provided over $17 million to the community. These funds have benefited lower-income households in Roseville through housing rehabilitation, public services, affordable housing, and homeless shelter and prevention services for over 35 years. In 2021, the CDBG funds provided grants of approximately 105,000 to six community-based organizations who assisted over 1,500 households and individuals. The public services programs included case management, mental health services, trauma and abuse recovery support services, hot meal and grocery delivery, as well as emergency overnight shelter for the homeless. In terms of housing accomplishments, the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program assisted six low-income households with housing rehabilitation. This program not only assists lower-income residents, but also improves the housing stock and sustainability of the city's neighborhoods. CDBG CV funds are CDBG grant funds to be used specifically for preventing, preparing for, and responding to the coronavirus. The city received $1.2 million in this particular funding. During the 2021 program year, approximately $32,000 was expended to provide fair housing services to 64 low-income Roseville residents. In addition, these funds were used to offer education to tenants and landlords regarding rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing law. AMI Housing was able to support 24 households with approximately $46,000 in funds expended through their rent and utility assistance program. About $41,000 was expended by the Placer County Office of Education to provide subsidized after-school care for 58 McKinney-Vento students attending Roseville schools. Lastly, the COVID-19 Response Small Business Assistance Program was concluded with roughly $215,000 spent in the 2021 program year. The program was able to provide short-term emergency assistance to 23 small businesses affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, with a focus on support for job retention for low and moderate-income persons and microenterprise businesses. In total, the Small Business Assistance Program dispersed about $650,000 to the community. Council has approved expenditure of all CV funds awarded to the city, the remaining of which will be expended this fiscal year. So staff requests that council receive public comment on this item and recommends that a resolution be adopted to approve the city's 2021 CAPER and authorize it for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Does the council have any questions of staff before we open it up to public comment?
Not for me.
Okay, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? I'll open up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Are there any other questions or deliberations from staff or council for staff?
Just a comment that this, when you bring these kinds of reports, it's really gratifying because we talk about it throughout the course of the year, but to see it summarized, you know, it might be small, but it is powerful. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you for all that you do, and it's important that we share this information with the community. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask our clerk to please read the motion.
Thank you. So, for tonight, the city council will consider adopting resolution number 22370, approving the 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER, and authorizing the city manager or his designated to submit the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, 2021 CAPER to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. If I can get a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldishel, with the second by Councilmember Albert. With that, we'll start our roll call. Vice Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci is excused for tonight, and Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was fast. Thank you very much, ladies. We actually have come towards the end of our agenda. I'd like to open it up for one last public comment to see if there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight? Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to our council and our staff for any further comments. I should mention that we do have our CFO, our Assistant City Manager, Dennis Kaufman, with us this evening. We're glad that you're here. Do you have any comments from you?
No more reports tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our city attorney?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any council have any comments they'd like to share? You want to start us off?
So this morning, a lot of us attended the CR College President's Breakfast, and it was eye-opening. Today, they focused on their sports program, but I just wanted to also mention, this is, this community college is very unique in that they're really forging a great partnership with the state university. And there's so many things that happen in our own community college. We've had reports before of how they adjust their program to get certifications for businesses that are looking for certain types of employees. They quickly adjust to try to get those types of students through that are ready to be hired. And today, we got to learn in their athletic programs, there was a football player that was also an entrepreneur. He has a product line, which is kind of cool, being a student already having that. And he was talking about, you know, they really focus on a leadership program on his team, and they talk about treating women respectfully, and there's three main things, I forgot them, but it was very leadership-oriented and very responsible, and I was pretty impressed with it. I thought it was just a great report, makes you really proud of what's going on in our local community college, and they're a great partner with our business community. Maybe the other council members have other views because there's a lot of material today.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple things. It's great to be back out in the community. Over the weekend, I had an opportunity, or Grants Advisory Commission, Committee, Commission? Anyway, had provided funding to something called Placer Advanced Robotics Team. And this weekend, at the old, at the HP Enterprise Campus, they had a girls' power team-building competition over two days, and that was great to go. I walked in, saw a family I know whose daughter is involved in that. And then, you know, we had our third Saturday art walk, which is just, it was the last one of the year, but our downtown is really coming, coming along. It was good to see that. And then yesterday, unexpectedly, I had an opportunity to attend the Shriners Luncheon, and it was a triple celebration. Shriners have been around 150 years. It's been in this area about 25 years, but the unexpected aspect of it was the head of development for them came up and thanked me for our reach program. That's our employee contribution program, which has supported that. They gave a challenge coin out to everyone, and I'm going to find a time, I communicated with Meg and I really, I just happened to be there because I was downtown, I want to make sure that challenge coin gets to our staff who are really involved in that. So, that's just a few things that have been going on.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Mendoza, anything?
Just a few things. LAFCO board met, and there's nothing I need to report out on that affects Roseville at this time. And I just wanted a couple things because I was absent at the last meeting, so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it. I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of Echo Park a few weeks ago. It's our newest used car dealership in the old Fry's building, so if you have an opportunity and are in the market, go visit them. Also, in that same week, we had one of our newer businesses, Cluck &amp; Cone, that had their grand opening. They're over next to Paul Martin's and Q1227 on Eureka, kind of a cool concept, so go show them some love as well. And lastly, just wanted to congratulate our, one of our Vernon-Roseville businesses right across the street, Bounty Hunters Cafe. They took part in a rib competition a few weeks ago, and they took third place overall out of about 58, 59 teams, so not too shabby, and it's always nice to see Roseville represented. So, that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Just one thing for us to note, last time that we were all here together, the mosquito fire was just beginning, and since that time, our, the fairgrounds in our city has played home away from home for thousands of fire personnel from throughout the state. And so even in unfortunate circumstance, the silver lining here is that we were able to provide that facility for those folks, and I know how much they appreciated the beautiful amenities. They used every practical square inch on that facility. And the silver lining is that it, I think it gave our residents really an opportunity to feel some pride that we were able to do that. I was out there, I know all of us have driven past and have seen the signs that kids have made, and I've seen people waving at them, and people have asked what they can do to help. So, a lot has happened in two weeks. I know they'll probably be on their way out in the next couple of weeks, but I just want to acknowledge our fire team that were there and just a sense of pride for all of us that we were able to host them in our beautiful city. So, with that, unless there anyone has any other comments, I'd like to move that we adjourn. Well, our first meeting in October will be October 5th, is that right?
Yes.
October 5th, so we'll meet you all back here, 6:00 PM, October 5th. Be safe, thank you.
All right, so who was it?
I guess 40 minutes. I was off my three minutes.
6:30.
43.